Stand for a moment of quiet reflection or prayer as you wish. As we are about to take council together on matters concerning this county, we should seek to faithfully discharge our duties of office, both in our debate and in our decisions, and promote the health, safety and wellbeing of those we serve. Thank you. Councillors, officers, welcome to our council meeting this evening. And I'd like to welcome councillor Linda Chatfield to her first full meeting of the council. So, welcome councillor Chatfield. I'd also like to welcome members of the public to the meeting, including those listening via the webcast. However, please note that although this meeting is open to the public to observe, it is not a public meeting. And we will only be hearing from those members of the public who are registered to ask a deputation or question. We're not expecting fire drills this evening. Therefore, in the event of a fire alarm, please leave the chamber by the nearest exit and assemble at the rear of the car park. Before we get to the agenda, I'd also like to remind members to stand and ensure your microphone is switched on when speaking. Speak clearly into it. And switch the microphone off when you've finished speaking, so the camera doesn't remain on you. When voting, please ensure how this will be raised and wait until voting is confirmed before lowering it. And I also remind members not to use their mobile phones during the meeting unless they need to step away from urgent matter, of which I've been informed. And as yet, I haven't been informed of any urgent matters. And if members of the public could also put their phones onto silent, that would be very helpful. So, on to the agenda. Apologies this evening to Delaney.
Chairman, we received apologies from councillors Beggy, McElrohn, Arpay, and Zolodziewicz. Therefore, councillors voting to 23 this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item two is chairmen's announcements. I'll be making my usual announcements at the next ordinary meeting of council later on this month. I've taken three announcements from the leader, members of cabinet, or the head of paid service. Likewise, I am advised there were no announcements to be made at this meeting from the leader, members of cabinet, or the head of paid service. Item four, declarations of interest. Has anyone, any members got any declarations of interest? Nope. Okay. Item five, petitions, deputations and questions from members of the public. There's one question and one deputation which have been received from members of the public. And first, we have a deputation from Alicia Cairns, MP. Ms Cairns, if you could come forward to the seats, please. And when you're ready to speak, switch on your microphone. And then you have five minutes.
Thank you. The campaign for independence moves on in the memory of our communities. And many are in disbelief with self-government's want to get out. Yes, we all share concerns about our high council tax and the issues of being a small unitary. But these plans won't solve the problem. Larger councils will not result in regular quality or fair funding. But they will die of democracy and see decisions made bad to us outside of Rutland. Because the voices of 40,000 are easily lost when it's reduced to half a million. And that is my main concern. We've been put in this position by government. And now we must determine, as Rutland, how we wish to respond. This council is required to put forward proposals and negotiate in our best interest. And that requires consultation. On the council's website, you can currently show your views on healthcare, school travel, nature strategy, housing associations, where allied with a budget, yet not on the existence of this council and the future of our county itself. And that is why I held two public meetings, to ensure our communities knew about what was going on and to gauge how we feel about these proposals. Our communities are clear. They have preferences over our future and they want a say. Councillors here are not passive participants in this process. And I hope the next proposals are genuinely reflective of what residents want and aspire to Rutland. Because I do not accept the argument that the threat of coercion when used is a reason to abandon our interests. We do what is right for Rutland, which is to engage in the process, but to make sure that we are clear we will not willingly give up our independence. Why? Because this gives us more power. A reluctant but engaged partner is more likely to have their red lines listened to. I will announce red lines in coming days and they will be a reflection on the public meetings I've held and the views of thousands of residents who've attended, written or spoken to me. If the leader wants to go into these negotiations better representing our county, then she needs the full council and our county behind her. And that means all councils must have a say and a vote. I push hard for the government to undertake consultation. Their answer was sadly clear. It is for councils to engage how best to engage locally, decide how to engage locally. I'm relieved that I'm told the council has now recognised that public consultation is necessary. And I hope the timeline is set up tonight. I have read emails over the last few days suggesting that I have the authority to opt us out of Rutland reorganisation. The letter on 10th of January made clear that this council wants to move as quickly as possible and agreed reorganisations needed. There simply is not unanimous agreement and certainly not that which should be fast-tracked. I have made my opposition clear, informed by the views I've heard at public meetings. I have opposed one single unitary for Leicestershire, opposed the suspension of elections and opposed the extension of Leicester City. I've written to ministers and short residents are aware, requesting meetings. What government is going to say if I suddenly do as the leader states and emails I should do, say we should opt out, is say, "Ask why was a letter signed for an unanimous agreement"? I am not an active participant in negotiations. We all know the Secretary of State has the ultimate authority and will force any decision she sees necessary, including if council like ours refuse to get on board. But Rutland County Council is the actor with agency in this process. And we must look forward alternatives that work for us. I ask on behalf of Rutland that you listen to residents and make us a truly representative decision for our county. I ask that councils back my petition to protect our ceremonial status as a county. Because we are Rutlanders and we should be recognised as such in law and by our king. In negotiations with government and other councils, we must be absolute. The government must make provision to protect our ceremonial status. To conclude, I wish to summarise the votes at my public meetings. On the question of fighting for Rutland to remain a unitary authority, two-thirds felt the decision had been predetermined and so it was not worth fighting to have a unitary. But if they had their say, the vast majority, if not unanimous, would retain the independent unitary council for Rutland. One-third wanted to fight to save our Rutland Unitary Council. There was almost unanimous support for two Leicestershire County Councils with Rutland as part of one, with Rutland the name if we are forced to merge. Only five people wanted one single Leicestershire-Rutland Unitary Authority. There was unanimous support for protecting our ceremonial status. Very low support for Meritie, whether that be Leicester, Leicestershire, Rutland Mayor or East Midlands Mayor. But most of all, residents were clear. They wanted to be given a chance to have their say. The next year will determine our collective future. We need to demonstrate our voice and determination to get what is right for us, but not go along with it just because we believe resistance is futile. Because it's never futile.
Ms Cairns, you can only read out what is on that's been put forward, I'm afraid.
Well, I've concluded. And I'm happy to have discussion about what the constitution sets out as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms Cairns. Any questions from councillors? Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. In your deputation, you state that the council must recognise that public consultation is necessary. Yet in Alex A, the letter from the minister attached to the papers for tonight as the supplementary agenda, the minister states in guidance note 4A, "It is for councils to decide how best to engage locally", and in 6F, "Once a proposal has been submitted, it will be for the government to decide on taking forward a proposal and to consult as required by statute". Given that there is clearly no role for local government to consult, although we have begun engaging, for example, with our parish council liaison committee, what exactly would you expect us to do?
So, I've spoken to the minister as well as having put down a written question. And he is clear that it's for councils to decide what appropriate engagement is with your communities. Is this council really saying you don't think public consultation is adequate on the proposals that go forward? There will be statutory consultation on Merities only. This is local government reform and reorganisation that we should be consulting on. Rutlanders are losing not only their council but their identity. The idea that any council's room would not think important to put a final proposal, whether it be in March or autumn, to public consultation would be fundamentally undemocratic. I've spoken to the minister, I know exactly what he means. It's for councils to determine how they engage. And I'm saying councils should call public consultation. And that's a rotten dispute as well.
Q and A for the members. Any more questions, Ms Cairns? Councillor Johnson.
Do you understand the difference between engagement and consultation? So, we are engaging. And we understand your, or we think we understand your point about consultation. But engagement is the key upfront. And we are actively engaging.
I'm afraid, councillor, I must disagree with you on your point that you don't sufficiently engage. As you know and as the leader will know from many emails she's received from the community, the only engagement from this council, from 10th of January letter, which said that we will unanimously agree that reorganisation is needed, which said there was unanimous agreement we want a Meritie and asked for it to be fast-tracked for that take place, was not consulted on and there was no engagement public. One press release does not engagement make. It is quite straightforward for the council to do the two meetings that I held. I should not have to help them. As for your suggestion that I don't understand the difference between engagement and consultation, consultation means exactly that. Going out and holding meaningful consultation where Rutlanders can respond. I've quoted wider quote, £50,000, I understand what the cost would be to hold a consultation for every Rutlander to have a vote. That would be the best form if we're going to lose our identity. But consultation means going out and providing a portal online on your website for people to respond if you are suggesting that we lose our unitary status or that we join one big Leicestershire donor, which clearly the opposition, the public, is to agree with. Engagement is one thing and I would urge you to do more of it. Consultation is the right thing to do when you're talking about this magnitude of a decision.
Any more questions from members? Okay, thank you, Ms Cairns. Next, we have a question from Tracy Hughes. As Ms Hughes is unable to attend, councillor Stevenson has agreed to ask a question on her behalf.
Thank you very much, Chair. Rutland has long been England's smallest county. The earliest reference to Rutland going back as far as Anglo-Saxon period. And the first reference to being a county was during the reign of Henry VIII. Sit second, I apologise, I will sit. Apologies, everybody. How do you plan to protect our history, heritage and identity as England's smallest county?
Councillor Waller, could you respond, please?
Thank you, Chairman. The government has made it clear that the administrative boundaries which define the current council's area of responsibilities will change through local government reorganisation. And Rutland will become part of a bigger local authority, although the boundary of this is yet to be decided. As the elected leader of this council, I'm seeking to negotiate the best option with surrounding councils for Rutland. This must meet the government's criteria for devolution and local government reorganisation. While this does not affect the history of our proud county, I am acutely aware that this could have a profound effect on the future identity of our county. I've already made it clear we would want the name of Rutland to be retained. However, the success of this is very much dependent on the decision made by the minister on council boundaries, as well as the council elected to serve that area, as it will have the power to determine its name. We will also be pressing the government to consider the recognition of the historic county of Rutland through the continued appointment of a Lord Lieutenant and High Sheriff. The appointment of these offices to the historic counties would provide government recognition of the importance of both the historic counties and these offices. It is our understanding that this may require a change to an act of parliament. Our Rutland Member of Parliament will have far, far greater ability to influence such a change here. And I'm pleased to see that she's already begun to campaign on this. Thank you.
Councillor Waller. Item six, questions from members of the council. No questions have been received from members. Item seven, devolution and local government reorganisation. This is report number 102025. Members will note an agenda supplement was published last week with a further letter from the Minister for Local Government and English Devolution. I would also like to point out at this stage that as chairman of the council, who is elected by full council, my role is to preside over the meetings of the council and to represent the council and Rutland in ceremonial matters. Whereas it is the leader of the council, who is also elected by full council, who exercises executive decision-making and is therefore the council's representative in dealings with central government and neighbouring councils. On that basis, I will now invite the leader to introduce the report and propose a motion. Councillor Waller.
Thank you, Chairman. For very many years, and certainly during the period of both my predecessors, Rutland County Council's leaders have been discussing devolution locally with a view to establishing a combined authority with or without a mayor. I have continued these discussions, both with Leicestershire and Leicester City and with councils to our east, as I explored what might be in the best interests of Rutland. But the Devolution White Paper published in December put an end to these discussions as it changed the political landscape in a number of ways. First, the government is inextricably linking devolution and local government reorganisation. Second, this government is also requiring the abolition of county and district councils and small unitary councils adjacent to new combined authority areas. Thirdly, this government expects new unitary councils to number 500,000 residents or more. This government is requiring the change extremely quickly, outlining proposals by March and, sorry, outline proposals by March and final proposals by November. And finally, this government is expecting the footprint of the combined authority to be coterminous with the Health, Police and Fire and Rescue Authorities. So, for Rutland, this means the footprint must be Leicester, Leicestershire and ourselves. Personally, I find all of this unreasonable for a number of reasons. Rutland County Council is financially sound. Our services are judged to be good or better. We're not broke, so why fix us? Combined authorities are about economic development and transportation. So, why insist their footprint is the same as the police's? But we cannot change government policy. And so we have two options. The first is to work with Leicestershire County Council, Leicester City Council and Leicestershire's seven district councils to try and get a reorganisation proposal that suits Rutland. Or we do nothing and let someone else decide our fate. Change is coming. I prefer to try and shape that change to do rather than be done unto. This might not be where we want to be, but it is where the government is telling us to be. Well before Christmas, I asked for a cross-party devolution working group to be set up comprising the leaders of the political groups on RCC. I did this because I thought devolution was too important to be in the hands of one political group. At its first meeting, the group agreed that we needed to avoid political posturing and work together for Rutland. This group has advised me and endorsed a decision I've taken with the Leicestershire Councils, for which I am extremely grateful for the advice that is. And the stance I've taken is to put together a proposal that is evidence-based and reflects the way people live their lives and is, secondly, not a whole Leicestershire authority. In addition, though I've not yet discussed this with the group, I intend to fight to keep the Rutland name in the title of any new council of which we are part. Getting agreement on a proposal covering over a million people and 10 council areas is a very tall order. But if we do, rest assured there will be public stakeholder and councillor engagement on the proposal before it is submitted. Councillors, I hope your comments tonight will steer me in my discussions with the other council leaders and help me to do my best to do what is right for Rutland. But at the end of the day, we mustn't forget it is the minister who will make the decision, not any of us in this room, nor our residents. Thank you.
Councillor Waller, do you have a second? Councillor Johnson. Okay, the motion has been proposed and seconded. We're therefore open to debate. Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Firstly, I welcome having a debate in public. It is absolutely needed. And I'm delighted to see how many of the public have engaged. Our residents are commenting on social media. They are attending in their hundreds of public meetings. Moving forwards, I think there is absolute clarity needed. And I'm going to be basing that on the paper that we have in front of us. First of all, any proposal, any engagement made to the government is solely the responsibility, the decision of the leader. And that needs to be absolutely clear. There has been some confusion in public domain. Secondly, the leader was quite right to point out the difference between devolution and local government reorganisation. Devolution discussions have indeed been going on for many years. This is an additional strategic layer working at regional level. The most obvious example for looking at that work is economic development and, of course, the possibility of mayor combined authorities. Local government reorganisation, however, is focused on how we deliver at an operational level for our local residents. For the districts in Leicestershire, their focus will be on this. Understanding what service delivery might look like whilst ensuring a quality of access to both services and amenities for their residents. That's a concern for Rutland, you're absolutely right. But for us, it is different. It is unique. We are a one-stop shop, being district, county and unitary. Therefore, this isn't just about our bean collections and planning, our potholes and council tax. It is about our very identity, our status as a county, something that runs very deep because it is about our history, our identity, our sense of belonging. Developing any proposal, therefore, is complex. The lead has already mentioned our cross-party working group. To be absolutely clear on the terms and conditions as they appear in this report, this is a group to be briefed about. It is a group to offer our views. It has no power to approve anything. That is for the leader to do. We have working groups of the local plan. We have working groups for life finance. They run alongside public consultation and public debate in the council chamber. My concern currently with this paper is that this is very much a group that meets behind closed doors. It's a private working group. As I said, it absolutely has its place. But it cannot be the only vehicle for consultation which is what is currently in the paper. In the spirit of democracy, our place, our county matters. And actually, leader, we prefer to shape our change. We must engage with our residents at every step of the way. We must make sure our councillors are engaged at every step of the way. And with that, Chair, I would like to propose an amendment to the current recommendation. The recommendation, do I have time to read out the current recommendation or shall I just move on to the amendment?
You've got less than two minutes.
Less than two minutes, I think I'll cover it. So, the current recommendation that council endorses the leader's position that both devolution and local government reorganisation must be delivered in a way that recognises and promotes the needs of residents, businesses and communities of Rutland predicated on the understanding that councils perform best when their boundaries reflect the way people live their lives. The words that I wish to add to this that plans or proposals for or agreements to devolution and local government reorganisation made on behalf of Rutland County Council by the leader shall be subject to debate by and vote at full council before submission to the government. Special council meetings will be scheduled in March and November 2025 in anticipation of these votes. And in order to inform these meetings, the leader must conduct a series of public engagement events to hear the views of Rutland residents. Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson, do you have a second to that amendment? Councillor Powell.
I have copies here, I believe I need to bring copies with me and I have those. I also have 20 points for the leader.
Mr Delaney, would you like to help? I've got a piece of that. And we need to write the council here, so first, please. Okay, the council will adjourn until 22:08. So, the meeting's now adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like, take your seats again. Please, we're resuming very shortly. Okay, the meeting is now reconvened. Councillor Waller.
Thank you. As the proposer of the motion, were I to accept this amendment, we wouldn't be voting on it. It would simply be as an ending. However, there's a sentence in here that starts special at the end, the last sentence. "Special council meetings will be scheduled in March and November 22 and 25 in anticipation of these votes." I would like the mover and seconder to accept slight change of phrasing there. It's not a change in principle. It's to do with process and that is, "At appropriate points prior to the March and November submission dates."
Councillor Stevenson, are you happy with that?
Yes, I'm happy with that, thank you, leader.
And Councillor Powell.
Yes, thank you, I'm happy with that. So, it's the same principle underlying but just the change in the actual wording about submission dates.
And for the benefit of those who weren't involved in our discussion, I'm perfectly happy for the debates to happen. And in fact, we've been talking earlier today with our monetary officer about when would be an appropriate time for us to come together on this topic. It's just that I want to be sure that we don't have an arbitrary date. We have a meaningful date and that was the purpose. My seconder is happy to accept as well. Thank you.
Okay, so, councillor, what was the exact change to the last sentence?
At appropriate...
So, special council meetings will be scheduled?
Deleting and put "at appropriate points prior to the..." They're related to March and November and add submission dates. They're related to March and November and add submission dates.
Add submission dates where?
The March and November submission dates.
Oh, right, okay, yeah. Okay, so the motion is now amended as described by councillor Waller, now we are open to debate, members.
Apologies, Chair, just a point.
You stand, please.
After the March and November twenty-five submission dates, do we then have a full stop, and then do we take then, do we take out in anticipation of these votes and in order to inform these meetings, or is that staying in? Sorry, it wasn't staying, that's staying in, thank you.
Okay, so we're now open to debate, so over to members. Yes, the amended motion is the substantive, so that's what we're debating, yeah. Oh, sorry, councillor West, will you interject?
I will speak, Chair, if no one else wishes to speak. Thank you, Chair. Well, I can remember that when Eddie Martin, whose name is on that board, ran the campaign for the independence of Rutland, there's a good deal of you in this room, all of them are as well. He was my housemaster when I was at school, and at sixteen-ish years old, I was probably not sufficiently well informed about the nature of the debate going on at the time for the independence of Rutland. However, prior to Rutland becoming independent, I was a Rutlander, as my family have been, on our farm in Rutland for four hundred years. We've always been there, Rutland has always been here and will continue to be. Regardless, members, of what the minister decides to do, there will always be a sign at the end of our farm drive, where it forms the boundary of the county, which says Rutland. Now, I do not wish for members of the public to be misled, if that's not too strong word, in the nature of what is going to happen, because Rutland has always existed, and for me and for everybody else here, it will always exist, it's been there essentially. I'm not happy about this reorganisation at all, I've had emails from Eric and Potters and I've had emails from tens, dozens, if not nearly probably a hundred, which, given the size of the water in Rutland, is a significant percentage of pro-electric, hundreds of emails, not one in favour of these proposals from government, I'm not in favour of proposals from government, I doubt there's a person through with. And I sincerely wish to make it known that I echo every single one of my residents' emails to me stating that they are not happy about these proposals. It is a rushed job by a Labour government flailing around in difficulty, and I am not going to withhold in my criticism of the Labour government, I wouldn't be able to forgive myself if I did, they are in a mess, and they are looking for quick wins, and this is quick beyond belief. I've never seen anything come out of a government quite as quickly as this, for us to propose to merge ten large organisations in six weeks is beyond belief. My worry is for residents, it is for the residents who depend on services of the local authority, for the vast majority of Rutlanders, we don't all necessarily depend on the services of the local authority, but there are those who do, those who rely on school transport, those who rely on adult social care, on children's services, who rely on someone from a local authority turning up at their door at a given time or being with them at a given time every day in order that they can know about their daily lives. This is going to bring significant disruption to that, and I worry that this being done in such a rush is going to cause people to lose some of our services, I hope dearly that it won't, and it will be down to the credit of our excellent officers that these things do continue, I hope dearly that they do. All I can say is, I've seen the workings of central government, and I just hope to go, they are watered down, because like a good many proposals that come out of Westminster, this needs moving, so there you go, that's my thoughts.
councillor West, councillor Heckles.
Good evening, Moulton in Parva, actually Liverpool, we're probably the smallest historic county in England, first mentioned in eleven fifty-nine, we gained our first county council in eighteen eighty-eight, we were absorbed into Leicestershire in nineteen seventy-four until we were reinstated as a county in nineteen ninety-seven, we tried it, it didn't work. The government's viewed a local government reorganisation in tandem with devolution over large strategic areas, the potential of both to deliver sustainable, high-quality public services and to drive economic growth sounds admirable. However, our community is ostensibly rural, and I would like to think our biggest businesses are agriculture, education, the armed forces and tourism. In fact, Rutland ranked among the bottom ten of all local authorities in the UK in terms of GPA growth, that's gross value added, between two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen. Increasing our size would exponentially increase our expenses, as our rural population would not be living in a densely populated small area such as Wandsworth or Westminster, notably all have the cheapest council tax. In order to achieve a population of five hundred thousand, our new area would be geographically vast. I'm the elected voice for Exton Ward, but it's not just about my views, so I wrote to all my parish councils within my ward, as I wanted to express the views of the residents within the ward. Overwhelmingly, each resident who responded prioritised saving our ceremonial county. Beyond this, most predominantly expressed a wish to stay as we are, I know you don't want to hear it, but sorry. If this was absolutely not possible, and that meant our drift fight, some wished to join the Stamford, some thought possibly Nutten and the Harbors, notably, only one resident thought for Donut, we've worked. The government white paper makes it clear, devolution is for unitary authorities where there is evidence of failure, or where their size or boundaries may be hindering their ability to deliver sustainable and high-quality public services. Rutland does not fit into this category, we are well-run and we deliver. Furthermore, the paper states that all decisions will be on a case-by-case basis, so I would certainly be happy to welcome the minister to Rutland, so that he could actually understand the uniqueness of our county. We are proud to be Rutlanders, and we do not wish to lose our identity. Above all, I could not support one person making the choice for our future, that would not be demographic, no, demographic, and from the response I've had from my ward, everyone in Rutland would like to express their opinions. Thank you.
councillor Heckles, councillor Smith, councillor Ross.
Thank you, Chair. Unlike councillor West, I can't claim to have a long association with Rutland, I moved here some twelve, thirteen years ago, and very happy to be here, it's a lovely county. I took part in a consultation in the marketplace, a market day, some two weeks ago, on the, it's spoken about, the budget, but quite a lot of people wanted to talk about devolution, and what came across, they were people worried about loss of identity, being subsumed into a much bigger authority. We are the smallest unitary authority in the UK, we're only forty-one families, and there are disadvantages in that, as the MP has pointed out, or because of that, we have a very high council tax. But there are advantages. We are close to our communities, we know and understand our communities. And I think the consequences if we are subsumed into an authority of five hundred thousand plus, that we would have a loss of identity. It wouldn't, I think, be the same understanding of the community it serves. I am the portfolio holder for children's services, I know that children's services knows the children looked after very well, is able to respond well to the families who need help, I'm sure I'll go to the same for adult services. I'm pretty pleased that we formed a cross-party working group, and I'm sure that cross-party working group will listen to the views of our residents. And I hope that any new structures make sense for our communities and achieve the high quality and the same services that we have at the moment. Ensuring the geography for any new council reflects the way that people live their lives, and form followers, keeping the identity and values of Rutland to the fore. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Smith, councillor Ross.
Thank you, Chair. December twenty twenty-four, white paper on devolution follows a broadly cross-party policy direction adopted since nineteen ninety-eight, the Greater London Authority and others that have followed it into since. We now have a patchwork called devolution in England, as its root, this white paper seeks to bring enhanced decision-making powers and necessary scale for development to all local authorities. I understand why people are attached to Rutland as a place. My family and I came here twenty years ago, now we're retired, and both our children work in London. We reflect some of the problems that Rutland faces. I do recognise that the council has efficiently delivered services and remained financially sustainable since nineteen ninety-seven, which is a huge achievement. But despite the good work of the council and the attractiveness of our county, we cannot simply ignore the challenges that we face. An economy that has shrunk by twenty-eight percent in the ten years to twenty twenty-two, one of the poorest performances in England, and a fundamental issue for residents. The lowest wages in employment in the East Midlands, unaffordable housing, young Rutlanders who can find neither employment nor housing here, and aging population by twenty forty-three, over sixty-fives will be over a third of the total of our population. The highest council tax, as others have mentioned, in England, manifestly unfair to the less well-off. The county has increasingly become a centre for commuting in a region with the lowest investment in transport infrastructure, this list is not exhausted. So I would suggest that our ability as a council to provide high-quality services and support economic growth long-term is challenging. This brings me to the leader's decision on the merits of reorganisation and whether we should be part of a morality. Reorganisation, as our MP has said, is not mandatory for Rutland, but I would suggest that we face a financial necessity due to the demographics and funding. The Labour group favours a three-way split of Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland to give the required scale while still being close to local issues, and I will come back to that point. Regarding devolution, there are good reasons why Rutland should be part of a mayoral authority, since only they will receive the additional funding and new powers, these will include skills improvement and transport of particular importance to Rutland, a spatial development strategy for housing and business allowing these to be considered at scale and regionally, and flexible funding based upon a long-term integrated settlement. Now, I do understand that some residents fear a loss of democratic control from a larger authority, but that is to ignore the positive of reduced micro-management from Westminster. The proposal is not perfect, and I would not think it is. Government stated that possible boundaries should reflect economic geography, but appears willing to agree new morality based upon existing boundaries, possibly for reasons of time. The future role of town and parish councils should have been defined by now, but it will only be defined in subsequent legislation I'm given to understand. In conclusion, we recommend that the leader welcome the opportunities that reorganisation and devolution will bring for Rutland families. We do, however, have three asks. Firstly, our council is a significant employer and critically important to our economy, therefore any reorganisation should not result in any material reduction in the numbers of officers employed in Rutland for an agreed period. Secondly, that in recognition of the importance it plays to residents, any new authority should include Rutland in its name. And thirdly, at some future date, consideration should be given to the boundary change to include Stamford as part of greater unity of authority. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Ross, councillor Carrick.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to explain a little bit the rationale behind tabling the amendment. Rutland residents are really proud of their county and its uniqueness. We are proud of its agricultural and cultural heritage, its beautiful countryside, its market towns and villages and high quality of life. This council contributes much to that standard of living through the care of its people and the quality of the service it provides. We don't want to give this up, or once again, our precious identities are assumed by a larger entity that doesn't understand the pride and ethos of Rutlanders in their special place. I have been out talking to residents, there is anger that this government is taking away the identity that has been fiercely fought for, lost temporarily in nineteen seventy-four, then retrieved in nineteen ninety-seven. Rutlanders want to be heard, hence the amendment table today, which I'm pleased to say has now been accepted. I'll let the residents speak, I'm going to share some of their comments I have received. Verbatim, their comments speak for themselves. One says, "I strongly believe that it is absolutely iniquitous that this government should be rushing through legislation with such scant and absolute detail that could lead to permanent detrimental changes to the lives of local residents beyond the life of this parliament. None of their assumptions have any hard evidence to base the benefit of these changes, in particular the cost benefits. If this government is so confident that this is advantageous, why don't they not call a referendum rather than behave like this, in this no-evidence-based, autocratic manner?" Another resident says, "I would sincerely hope Rutland's leader will think again and ensure all Rutlanders, or at the minimum, all councillors are afforded a voice in this process, mirroring how other councils have proceeded, as the outcome and impact is crucial to the residents of Rutland." And thank you councillor Waller for accepting the amendment. And another, the last one I will read out, is, "I'd like to ask you that you will strongly support the interests of the residents of Rutland at this meeting, and try to ensure that our voices are heard, whether by our councillors or by a referendum. I believe the current government has failed to understand most, if not all, of the issues involved in such a reconstruction, and we cause irrecoverable damage to the countryside as a whole." There are many more similar comments that demonstrate that residents want to be heard. Some in the east of the county cannot understand the gravitation towards Leicester, their affiliation is with South Caerfenn and Lincolnshire, they want to be listened to, heard, and importantly, understand any rationale for alignment with other councils. I strongly support the comments on the public's desire to be listened to. I would also like to recommend to the administration that they publish a communication and give a plan, so that residents are aware of the process we are going through from this point forward. They will also understand when they will have an opportunity to have their say, provide input, and again, importantly, the rationale for decisions that are being made as they are. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Tate? and councillor Clifton?
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. On behalf of my residents, I would like to speak. We in Rutland are peaceable people, polite, courteous, not prone to anger, but in company with many other speakers, perhaps a thief, I feel that I speak for many. When I say that these proposals on devolution and local government reform are rushed through, they are lacking in detail. they are lacking in detail, which have been described by eminent academics as the worst local government white paper in history, as proposals that will remove the word 'local' from local government. And they are wrong way forward for Rutland. Perhaps they might suit some of our large urban areas, but I don't think they suit as sparsely populated rural districts such as Rutland and surroundings. We may speak in polite, gentle tones here, but I do hope that the message goes out from really most of us, I think, but do not underestimate the level of our distress. There is no democratic mandate for this, these proposals, and as we know, there has been no public consultation. The late government have said they have no intention to consult the public on these seismic local government changes. They have said it is up to us to consult the public, and consult only we must. And I am genuinely very pleased that we seem to be now on a pathway to do so in some harmony. The local party only received 33.5% of the votes across our United Kingdom in the general election in July, and yet they have 64% of them each who sit at Westminster. And, to coin a phrase, I do believe this is called an elective dictatorship. I believe that Rutland is a happy place and that Rutland County Council is an excellent local authority with an array of results and statistics which speak for themselves. I had, in fact, written them all down on a slide I couldn't listen to during that time. I believe that these proposals are terrible for local democracy in Rutland. As Commissioner Heckles has pointed out, we have had a council here since January 1889, first elections, Rutland had a council, and we've had a distinct council for Rutland now 136 years. We would entirely lose this. In Leicestershire, at present, there is one county councillor for each 13,500 people. On present analysis, that would give Rutland three councillors. I'm sure members can see what that would mean for Rutland. I am deeply worried that we would be utterly powerless if no one is able to shape or to protect Rutland. And I am extremely worried in particular about planning and the protection of our unique and beautiful countryside. And I also believe that the national level, the complete lack of any protections for English local government, are wrong. They actually have special protections in northern some of the counties, such as Sweden. And I believe that this is triply so when we are still, as we are, a historic ceremonial and administrative county, which is a unique distinction in the United Kingdom. Given a choice, Mr Chairman, I don't want an elected mayor and I don't want a mayor authority, but I have to be honest and say that if I was offered all exchange of status quo with local government, I would take it. And if there was a possibility of resistance, I will always resist. However, based with the political reality that we seem to have, we have a choice to campaign. We must preserve at all cost the ceremonial county of Rutland. I think we've all heard how much it means to everybody. We have Lord Lieutenant and I'm sharing. They are a focal point for our county and long may that continue. And on the premise that I could not say no, if I could not, I feel Rutland would be best served by being a unitary authority of the smallest size possible and retaining the same characteristics as our own county. And we have been told that we must be in the Leicestershire, but clearly I do not support Rutland being in one enormous council with Leicestershire, the so-called donut. And whilst I hope for the best, and I do see our amendment as genuine progress, we know that in reality this is perhaps unlikely and that we do fear the worst, a forced merger with a 500,000-word council area and losing a ceremonial county. And I do want to say this, perhaps not for you in this room, but for the people who are listening, that for all those who are concerned about the future, for all those to whom these proposals all fear or worry, the source of anger, I hear you, I think we all hear you, and I agree with you, and I and others will do everything we can to try and protect Rutland. The current government will not be empowered ever, and whatever happens, whether we lose our city, whether we lose our county status, you have my word, but we will always fight for it.
Commissioner Clifton, impeccable timing there. Other members. Commissioner Corby.
Thank you, Chair. The letter dated 5th February, June 2022, was very clear that Rutland County Council would be able to explore options with neighbouring councils, in addition to those included on this invitation. And in particular, where this aided those councils to address concerns about their sustainability or limitations arising from size or boundaries. The criteria within that attached schedule to that letter also stated the proposal should be for a sensible geography, which would help to increase housing supply and meet local needs. In respect of boundaries, it also advised that existing district areas should be considered as building blocks. But where there is strong justification, more complex boundary changes will be considered. This would seem to contradict the advice around boundaries being in line with fire, police and health as being sent in stern. Given the overwhelming response of those who I have spoken with in my ward in Ryle, Caddyston and Esselham, there are many who unsurprisingly fit a closer alignment with Stamford and SKDC. I remain concerned that the door would appear to be firmly shut in respect of further discussions with SKDC, despite the obvious synergies that exist between the two counties. As a county, it is difficult to see how we may meet our housing needs without the creation of new settlements or significantly increasing housing in our rural settlements. Therefore, surely it does make sense to explore all possible options, including with SKDC, as in my mind, potential additional tenants of Stamford, Bourne and Granton could potentially attract even financially sustainable options going forward. The legal has advised that SKDC were adamant that they did not want Rutland to join, even though Rutland was a participant within the Lincolnshire Enterprise Partnership right until the 1st of February 2025. This would seem premature, given my understanding that Greater Lincolnshire have also yet to agree on local government reorganisation, so I would urge further discussions in this respect. I've made appointments several occasions now, in that whatever happens, we, as a successful unitary, need to take an elite and leave no stone unturned in getting the very best for our residents, in what is a very challenging and very insatisfactory situation. Either way, both council and our residents should be kept fully informed on forward pathways and consulted throughout. Finally, with regard to identity, it is important to us all. For someone like me, whose ancestry has been linked to Rutland and Stamford for literally hundreds of years, I am fiercely protective to rock towards Rutland and to Stamford. I'm proud of my heritage, my county and my town of Stamford. Therefore, would be fully endorsed the need to at least retain our name and ceremonial status wherever.
Commissioner Corby, Commissioner Waller, your point of information.
Yes, it's just to correct a statement that Commissioner Corby claims I made about South Caerfenn. What I actually said was, was in relation to the local enterprise partnership and that morphing into a combined authority in Lincolnshire. We were, and still are until the end of this financial year, a member of the Greater Lincolnshire Local Enterprise Partnership, and that's Lincolnshire County Council, North Lincolnshire Unitary Authority and North East Lincolnshire Unitary Authority and ourselves. The Lincolnshire councils have gone through the process of forming a combined authority and will be electing their mayor in May. When this was being discussed, it was South Caerfenn under the previous administration there, not the current one, that said they did not want Rutland as part of the combined authority. The discussion wasn't about local government reform.
Okay, thank you for that point of information. Commissioner Waller, other members. Russell Willoughby.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner West on setting the scene so brilliantly. We are faced with a very autocratic move from government, and we have been given timescales which I think are totally inappropriate and difficult to meet. I have total confidence in the members of our cross-party group in Devolution. They are full brains, plenty of experience and plenty of ideas. We mustn't put our heads in the sand, we must move forward, but we must move forward democratically to make sure that everyone gets at least a say as we take it forward. I was at the East Midlands Council, I think, last Friday, and it was interesting to see the dynamics there, and I know that our leader is well ensconced in that group and trying to make as much of a Rutland standing as she possibly can, and that looks to be good. I really think that the ceremonial bits of our county are really important to us. And those of you who are lucky enough to be close to the ceremonial will see just how hard our Lord Lieutenants and the Deputy Lord Lieutenants work around the county. It's a small county, but by golly, they keep busy and they keep body and soul together. And the High Sheriff, I saw him at the vet's breakfast last Saturday, doing his bid, and it's really important to get that Rutland spirit forward. I think as we take things forward, one of the things that Commissioner Ross made was about losing staff positions. Well, the one thing I fear over the next year or two is that we will never have enough staff, no matter how hard they work and how many hours they put in to actually deliver the administration that is going to be required for any reorganisation that is set upon. Throughout this team, this time, sorry, I think the point about communication is really, really well made. Our people, our residents, need to be kept informed on how progress is going, even if it is slow. Keep them all in the picture so they all know that we are trying to do the best out of what is a pretty thankless task. Thank you.
Commissioner Willoughby. Just Commissioner Carrick.
Thank you, Chair. I want to just pick up where my fellow councillor just left off. I know it's obviously too early to go through the amendment with the leader, but it is very important to far more residents who I have been communicating with. So now that it's amended and we've got that the leader must conduct a series of public engagement events, I would really welcome what that would look like. We've already heard tonight what there is a mass difference between engagement and consultation. I actually also think engaging with public and consulting with the public is also a good opportunity to do some myth busting. There are lots and lots of things that I have been seeing on social media that I don't believe to be true. For example, when we move into a merge with whoever, our council tax will be much cheaper. So these are just examples of what people are considering. And they matter because that's what people, that's what matters to people and how much they are spending on their bills. And feedback from my ward, from Bardy Thought, is that, as was already pointed out, is the communication. It's communication, communication, communication that came through loud and clear. People really just didn't feel like they've been informed enough, they didn't feel like they had their say, and they didn't feel like their voices were being heard. We also need to understand and consider how unsacking a change can be for people, and we need to take them on the journey with us. So I think it's really, really important that we can be as transparent as we possibly can at where we are on this journey of change. I have to say, in Bardy Thought, there wasn't a clear winner of what was the direction of travel. Some were quite indifferent, actually, said, well, it's a government-centric government decision, let's just get on with it. Some were really concerned about Rutland's reserves and what would happen to them. There were some who also wanted to fight to keep Rutland as it is and for us to do whatever it took to do that. And then for some others, it was about exploring all of the options, as we read it by Commissioner Corby, on different footprints that weren't necessarily on the ISV, please, that we fired footprint. Just to conclude, I am an independent councillor, and as was pointed out, it might be that we only get three councillors going forward, and I do fear that the independent voice will be lost for Rutland. Thank you.
Commissioner Carrick. Other members. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members. My speech tonight reflects the views of many residents who have taken their time to contact me with their views. Firstly, I'd like to thank each and every one of them. It is clear from the many comments that our small county is as important to them as it is me. The many responses carry a similar theme. The unique identity of our county is treasured, and we must do everything in our power to ensure we do not disappear. We have always been mountain impavo, and our status as a ceremonial county must be preserved. Our residents would like their views heard in a meaningful consultation. Indeed, Schedule IV in the guidance by the Secretary of State dated 5th Feb stipulates that local views of residents and businesses should be sought and evidenced in the proposal. This is further clarified in the section on the engagement and consultation on the reorganisation on page nine of that letter. Our residents were concerned that full council should be given the opportunity to share views and offer a steer to Cabinet and the leader in order for her to fully represent the views of Rutlanders, and will be pleased that the amended motion enables this. Our colleague, Commissioner Beggy, is unable to attend this evening due to work commitments out of county. He would like me to share that these sentiments are echoed by the residents in his Greatham Ward, as demonstrated by the many emails to him. I shall leave my final words to those of the chair of one of my parish councils. Any response on behalf of the people of Rutland should be based upon the fact we are already a unitary authority, as well as being one of the traditional Shire Counties of England. Together with the city of Leicester, Rutland are the two unitary authorities which should be the building blocks around which the new structures should be constructed. Given that and its long-fought-for identification to reflect its status as an old county of England, Rutland must be included in the name of any new unitary authority that covers it. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner Trullian.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm proud to be a Rutlander and a Rutland county councillor, but I'm also a localist. As elected councillors, I feel it is our duty to put priorities of our local people first. So I urge the council in saying that we need a public consultation. It is the council's duty to deliver the facts for local people. We understand that the process is swift and decisions from central government can be harsh, brutal and undemocratic. But this should not be left to the elected Member of Parliament. Democracy is all about fairness. First off, if the scenario is that the next set of local elections, there may well very be three to six councillors representing 41,000 people, by apportion and population, this may be, this may be correct, but I feel this will be a large imbalance in representation on the bigger stage. It is disheartening that our democracy may be squeezed. Bigger walls means less councillor coverage and one example of this meaning that casework may be harder to undertake and the ability to solve local issues and local problems for local people. Councillors need to be on the ground of their walls solving these issues. And I just want to say, I want to appeal to the leader of the council, what do you want your lasting legacy to be?
Councillor Sreehan. And it's my member's second. Councillor Powell, first.
Thank you, Chair. I think we've seen from the quality of the speeches in this debate the value of having a full council meeting on this topic, the facts that have been put forward, the views from residents and the feeling from councillors, because we represent our residents in Rutland and so I'm very pleased that the additional amendment was passed so that we have the opportunity on future occasions to have these debates. I feel this is very much a starting discussion and I'm sure there'll be lots more and the beginning of the journey with residents alongside us to actually reflect their views as things develop. It's a very, as we've all said, you know, let's be clear, this devolution and local government reorganisation, whether you agree with it or not, and I don't think there's been various sort of views put forward on pros and cons, a lot of it will be in the detail when we get to it and people, we don't know what it will be. But it's our job as councillors to make sure that this works in the best interest of Rutland residents and to be proactive in trying to achieve this. So fully endorse the leader's position on trying to do that. I think we should be talking, Rutland has a long independent tradition and its identity as a county, we've heard already how important that is. And as an independent councillor, obviously that's what is important to me. I too have concerns about representation on a larger body. So I think it's really good to have this debate and I look forward to having future debates when we have more detail to actually work on and that the whole council and our residents can be involved in this process.
Councillor Powell. Councillor Stevenson. According to procedure rule 38, you cannot speak again, I'm afraid.
Oh, I thought I did propose a amendment which carried, then became a motion that then goes back to the other procedural.
Yeah, I'm being advised that I'm afraid you can't. Any other members? Councillor Hensley.
Thank you very much, Chair. This morning I was looking at various things and I saw the character, 'council's corporate priorities' and it's on our paper tonight. Tackling climate emergency, diversing sustainable local economy, support the most vulnerable and provide good public services. Now, very interestingly, last night, another migrant fell down a hole in their, on their walk and phoned actually another councillor rather than me. It was raised with me and by luck, one of my residents is also connected with the council and today the hole has been investigated and the necessary actions have been taken. But that is what local government is about, that's how quickly we can move. Quite often we find that things will take a long time and I have worked with other places where, you know, you wait three weeks, so there could be some injuries. So anyway, my main part, on the page 21 of the White Paper forwarded by the full Deputy Prime Minister, 'Too many decisions affecting too many people are made by too few.' This struck me as ironic. When we are told in the papers before us tonight on page 11, 'Executive functions are exercisable by the leader of the county council unless a leader arranges for them to be exercised by another cabinet member.' Could this be described to too few people? It's clear from the passion we have in our county, for our county, that we need to take the people with us and not do unto them. We have a role to play in the local government reorganisation and devolution journey. There have been some ground rules suggested, these suggestions come with some caveats, I think my colleague here has alluded to some of them. We need to start thinking outside the box. We are a successful, efficient unitary council. Why are we not leading discussions on what the after the possible is? The decision has been made, I believe, by Angela Raynor, most likely by civil servants, who have little knowledge of these things, so it is imperative that we make them aware. I spoke to several senior people within the county and residents of my village and they have really good WhatsApp group that puts messages there and I shared that with them, say, please feedback for me. And they understand that, you know, a lot of people have dedicated a lot of time to this county and we have recognised some of them and one of them we've got on the board there who spoke to me. So we recognise the freemen, what will they become? Will they become Freeman of Leicester? I wonder. There are some things that we all agree upon and there is, we need to reserve what makes Rutland unique and if we need to, we will go down fighting, ensuring that we make very clear where our red lines are and on the basis, and I would urge, on that basis, I would urge all of you to put pen to paper and write to the king. Whilst we accept the probable outcome of reorganisation, we are not prepared to lose our identity as a ceremonial county. There is a relatively simple solution, but it is up to all of us to make sure we are heard, otherwise future generations will not know Rutland as the smallest county. Let's be honest, those who've been here for a while, we've heard from a couple of them whose families have been here for hundreds of years, we are not quite like anyone else and that should be celebrated and preserved, not discarded by the need for government to try and fudge the local government funding issues for a few more years. Now, as some of you may know, if someone tells me to behave or tells me what I can do, I will ask why. This is one of the occasions where we need to adopt the attitude and I urge the leader to listen. Our residents, young and old, have given us a good indication in the future Rutland conversation what is important. We need to engage with our communities and explain what the potential options are and then work to deliver as close to that as possible for our electorate, who are the reason we are here tonight. This is not about personal feelings, this is not about politics, this is about the serious long-term consequences of this potential decision. On this, I would also urge the leader to consider sharing the nought of this task in a very clear and transparent way, not as it would be apparent at the moment that we hear from other people, from posts from somewhere else. And I appreciate it's a very difficult time and it is a fast moving project. Please take this seriously and if you need help, please be brave enough to ask. And finally, the rules are there to be interpreted and to fit the needs of the communities, not to make us fit the rules. Long live Rutland.
Councillor Hensley. Any other members? This is councillor Wise.
I've adjusted this, I hope I can read it as I go through as people are talking. I found 500,000 a very daunting number. Early we got concessions of 350,000 out of the minister in a minuteive meeting, which was very pleasing, but it's still very large. To give you some idea, Harbour and Melton, everybody says, why don't we join with Harbour and Melton, is 190,000. That feels enormous to me. We've got to be in these discussions, whether we agree or disagree on whether there will be economic benefits and savings, we can argue if there's political arguments behind, but we have no choice but to engage to get the best for Rutland. We need to be part of the discussion, not sitting on the outside. Those are big numbers and we need to make sure our place within them is secure. On a slightly different note, can I ask that any consultation or engagement does allow those people who would welcome going back into Leicestershire to have their say? I have heard from a number of residents who've said going back into Leicestershire is overdue and I think we need to be careful in the interest of democracy to allow those people a voice as well, whether we agree with them or not.
Councillor Wise. Any other members?
I'm really sorry, Chair. Could I just clarify, because I think I've misunderstood the constitution, procedure rule 38, 5D, if there, so this is with regard to members speaking again, if their first speech was on an amendment by another member, so I appreciate that comes out, comma, to speak on the main issue after the amendment has been disposed of, so this is now a substantive motion. Sorry to be awkward, Chair, I just need to clarify the constitution.
I will revert to my legal adviser who will explain the situation.
It's exactly as you've read out, councillor Stevenson, so had you spoken on an amendment in that debate, then you could speak on the substantive motion afterwards. And I heard you when the chairman was giving his direction previously, saying that you hadn't given a speech, you'd simply moved your amendment, but I don't think that was actually the case because your amendment came at the end of quite a lengthy speech.
Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Dodson.
Thank you, Chair. I had a lot of correspondence from residents on this issue, not surprisingly, and I promised them that I would represent their position, which actually doesn't present a difficulty for me because I moved here 25 years ago this summer and I actually found Rutland quite magical. I think we've got, we really have got something here and I've always felt that, I actually feel very attached to it. So at the same time, I know, because I've been involved in a couple of the ministerial teams meetings, that this government has an absolute determination to make this happen. So on the one hand, I think Rutland is really magical and I agree with all the residents' feedback that I've had, that I would love to preserve it, but I am really not sure if we can do it. I think so far, the negotiations that I've either heard about or the meetings I've been party to mean that we are exploring things that would be beneficial to us and I for one do not support the doughnut idea. I do not want us to be subsumed into a greater Leicestershire. However, we are being directed by government and it is a very difficult position for the leader to be in and it's difficult for us as the administration because we are being driven very hard and we're not being given a choice, this is not, this is not, it appears, an entirely democratic process. We are, we are being pushed, we are being pushed very hard, as I'm sure our MP is actually aware, because that push comes from Parliament. So my preference would...
And the public, please do not speak during the debate.
My preference would be that we keep Rutland's identity and I do believe the ceremonial county status is important to us. I actually think that Rutland as a concept will carry on regardless because I think there is a strength of community here and I think in future it might need more work to make that strength of community survive. Survive, I do think it will. So I believe that we are doing the right thing and I'm happy to support the amendment because I think it is very sensible and I do believe that we need to be talking to our residents about the reasons for the change and why we are where we are.
Councillor Dodson. Any other members? In that case, councillor Waller, are you ready to sum up?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I don't think any of us want to be in this room tonight because none of us want to be in the position that we have been put in by that White Paper that was published in December. I think the vast majority of us, both in this room and throughout the wide, would like to at least keep Rutland as it is and possibly organically grow with some neighbouring authorities, but keep the essence of Rutland within that. But that isn't where we are. We've heard very eloquently from councillor Corby and others that we should be looking to Southcysteven. I'm still talking to Southcysteven, in fact I spoke to their leader only this morning and he was once again saying, are we, you know, want to go with them? And I said to him, what I've said to him three or four times already, I can't get anybody in government to tell me that we can, we as Rutland can move out of the health stroke, police stroke, fire and rescue footprint into another one and furthermore into an existing mayor or combined authority. I've asked the question, I'm not getting an answer on that and he's not got an answer either. And he said, oh, but can't we just reorganise the circle government? We're going to go this properly with South Holland and, I can't think the name of the one, just be on there before you get to Boston, three of them anyway, three Lincolnshire districts, and you can come and join us and if Malcolm wanted to come, they could come and join us as well. There's a measure of logic in all of that, but that isn't the world that I am currently living in, where letters of intent, for want of a better term, are required by March and full proposals by November. It's not a world any of us are living in. It's not what we want, but it's where we are. And as I said in the opening this debate, we can do two things. We can either try and get the best deal possible for Rutland or we can do nothing and have it done to us. And I don't like being done to, as all of you have known me for a period of time, will accept. So I want to fight to get the best and thank you all for what you've said tonight and reflecting what your residents have said, because that does help me in my possibly argument, I was going to say debate, but I think they might be getting towards argument at some point, with fellow leaders across Leicestershire. But I have an ask of you as well and it's about engagement. I have had people say to me, we didn't know anything about the White Paper till we heard that the MP was calling a meeting. Well, we put out a press release and as councillors, you all get all our press releases. So can I ask you going forward, when you get them, to share them on your social media within your wards? Because all our parishes have got a Facebook page or something else, because it's difficult to get the word out there. And engagement is about telling people what's going on, about explaining where we are, where we are, and that's what the press releases are about. Clearly, that's not all we're going to do, we're not just going to issue press releases. But we also have to be conscious of the fact that in total, there are 10 local authorities involved in this and each of them will have their own priorities, concerns and cares. And our press, our engagement activities, we can't do something that's going to go contrary to one of them because we've got to keep people working together on this. We can't start antagonising who might be our future partners. And so there will have to be a level of coordination about the messages going out. It goes against the grain for me to say that, as many of you know, I rather like my own way.
30 seconds, councillor Waller.
But please, help us keep trying to work together to do the very, very best we possibly can in very difficult circumstances for Rutland. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Waller. So the motion is that council endorses the leader's position of both devolution and local government reorganisation must be delivered in a way that recognises and promotes the needs of residents, businesses and communities of Rutland, predicated on the understanding that councils perform best when the boundaries reflect the way people live their lives, that plans or proposals for or agreements to devolution and local government reorganisation made on behalf of Rutland County Council by the leader shall be subject to debate by and a vote of full council before submission to the government. Special council meetings will be scheduled at appropriate points prior to the March and November 2025 submission dates. In anticipation of these votes and in order to inform these meetings, that the leader must conduct a series of public engagement events to hear the views of Rutland residents. All those in favour? Any other members, Chair? Okay, so the motion is approved. The next meeting of council is on the 27th of February, which is the budget meeting. Clearly, this is a watershed moment for the council and the county, a life which has not been seen for 50 years and it's incumbent on us all to do our best for our residents and our county. My family has been farming in Rutland for over 300 years. My family's been farming in Rutland for over 300 years and I am also a former high sheriff. Members, I'm sure you will join me in wishing councillor Carr well for her forthcoming hospital stay and we wish her a speedy recovery. That concludes the business of this meeting. Thank you, members, and I declare the meeting closed at 20:47.